Get on the closed session by phone and so Alex, did he contact you to ask Mac, was that legal?
He did, and that is okay. So when we get close to that closed session, what I committed for Mac and David was to shoot him a text message and let him know when we're about to go on.
All right, thank you.
Sir.
Alrighty, well, it's uh seven o'clock. So thank y'all for joining us tonight. And Brad's gonna open us up with the invocation. Thank you, Brad.
Yeah, you're welcome. Let's pray. Father, thanks for the night. Thank you for the chance to govern our town. Give us wisdom, we pray, a sense of cordialness and a sense of togetherness as we make our decisions for our community. Thank you for our town, the place we live, the people, our neighbors. Your name I pray.
Amen. Alright, thank you, Aaron. Pledge of allegiance. Alright, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the Republic, where we stand, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, thank y'all. Alright, call the meeting to order and Aaron, do we have anybody that signed up that wants to speak for public comments?
No one has let me know ahead of time, but if there's anyone on the call, please let us know by unmuting your microphone and letting Mayor Dunn know that you'd like to give public comments.
Alright, well, I see TJ Pressler on there, but so nobody wants to speak, so we'll move on to the agenda approval. And so we do want to add the closed session. Two things, Alex, Linda wants to make a, give us an update on the, her property negotiations. So we need to include that in the closed session as well as what, you know, what on the Stinson Farms. So what are those numbers? Do y'all have them handy?
I believe that would be three and five, Mayor. It's 143-318-11A3 and 11A5.
11A3 and five. Alrighty, we'll make that five A. And hopefully it'll be around eight forty-five or Alex, we'll just play it by ear and let that Mac and David know. Because, you know, we gotta sign off and then go to the one that Aaron, the other link that Aaron sent to us. Any other changes or additions to the agenda? Alright, can I get a motion to approve it, please?
I'm moving approval of the agenda tonight with the addition of five A closed session.
Motion by Brad, second.
Second.
Steven, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, ayes have it. Alrighty. Alright, first up is the Stinson's Farm Development Agreement. I'll open the public hearing and then we'll re, the applicant has asked for us to recess it until February eighth twenty-one.
Mayor, could I add something to that very quickly?
Sure, can.
Sure, Alex here, everyone. So I would, Mayor is correct, and the applicant has requested we kind of continue the conversation for this project to February eight, but also recess and continue the public hearing until February the twenty-second. So that's continuing the conversation on February eight, but recessing and continuing the conversation on February, or excuse me, recessing and continuing the public hearing on February the twenty-second.
Alright, thank you, Alex.
Yes, sir.
Alright, next up is the NC DOT Greenway Crossing Signal Inspection Agreement. So we need to, we don't need to pull anything up, I don't think. But Alex, can you give us an update on your conversations with DOT?
Sure, be happy to. And to help everybody, I know everybody's not, some people are visual learners. Is it okay if I pull up a brief PowerPoint? Great. And as I'm pulling that out, I want to recognize our, one of our DOT engineers, Travis Pressler, for joining us. Big thank you to Travis for joining us. So I'm gonna do a quick run through and he and I both will be available for for questions. Background, so real briefly, as you know, we're doing a hard design for the Greenway portion and section over there by Blarmer Park and Vicary subdivision. And as part of that, we're required to put in a pedestrian hybrid beacon signal, Hawk Beacon, and DOT requires an agreement to review and inspect. That agreement is typically what the actual cost is. And on January the sixth, the council thought about it and they wanted to get some further information just to get comfortable with it, see if they wanted to continue examples of when DOT has charged municipalities in similar situations, and then the policy allowing DOT to do this. So I wanted to provide the update that DOT has provided several interlocal agreements for similar situations. For example, staff verified that NC DOT took the same approach with the Village of Meisenheimer for a Greenway Crossing there. Same concept where they were charged as a placeholder $6,000 and with the agreement to be reimbursed minus DOT's. And then finally, a written policy that DOT provided. So if DOT, or excuse me, if council wants to move forward, the recommendation would be to authorize staff to enter into a review and inspection agreement with it, NC DOT, and any related future maintenance agreements with NC DOT, just for this particular crossing. So that being said, wanted to be brief and let you know staff are here to answer any questions you might have, and as well as DOT engineer, Mr. Travis Pressler.
Alright, thank you, Alex. Any questions for Alex or Travis or comments? Alright, well, you know, I was the one, you know, I'll go ahead and make my comments. I was the one that brought this up. It just seems peculiar to me, Travis, and I know you're the engineer and you're the, will be the messenger back and I need to talk to, you know, legislative guys and the higher-ups, but it just seems odd to me that we're paying taxes, you know, tax money for y'all to work. And then, you know, this is just, should, should just be in your scope of work in your day-to-day process as these projects come about, especially due to the fact that you're bound to be less busy due to the number of projects that have been put on hold. I don't know that for a fact, but in any business, when your funds are, or sales are down, you're not as busy. The operations folks aren't as busy, sales guys are out busier, but the operations folks. So it just seems odd to me that y'all were charged for this. Secondly, you know, does the city of Charlotte pay this? I'm just curious, as many stoplights as they have pedestrians, pedestrian crossings and things like that, I was curious, does the city of Charlotte pay this?
This is Travis Pressler with NC DOT. I believe that question's directed to me, but I guess there's a lot, a lot there to unpack, but I would say that this is our normal process that we've been following for, for many, many years. We, I don't do the signal review, and I'm not part of that group, but I do know that this is, this is a normal process. And we provided an example, I think the example that we provided was, like Alex said, for, for the town of Meisenheimer, but you know, this would apply to any entity essentially other than the NC DOT that would want to install some kind of traffic signal into the NC DOT right-of-way. And there's a variety of different types of agreements with, with other towns and the city of Charlotte main, they maintain, and they maintain our signals inside the city of Charlotte. So though it's, there's a variety of different ways to go about signal maintenance, signal installation, but for this example, it would follow most of the other types of agreements that we would, would enter into and have entered into with other municipalities across the division and across the state. So I.
Alrighty, I got it. Thank you, Travis.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, comments?
We'll, we'll get a copy of all this, all the, the work that's done for, through this process, correct?
Hey, Mr. Ayers, could you clarify, looking for like the design work or?
Well, I mean, I guess what I'm asking to be blunt here is that for six grand, we're gonna get a paper trail of what that six grand is paying for, correct?
Yes, sir, and Mr. Pressler can add, add on to this, but essentially, my understanding, what we would get is there'd be an itemized listing of, you know, X engineer makes this amount per hour, he spent this amount in hours, and so this will be a charge there and there'll be an itemized list.
Okay, thanks, man.
Yes, sir.
Alright, any other comments, questions? Alright, what's the pleasure of the council?
Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve the NCOT Greenway Cross Signal Inspection Agreement.
Second.
Who is that, the second?
John.
Yeah, alright, motion by Ms. Paxton, second by Mr. Martin. Any further discussion? Alright, Aaron, could you do a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. District one, Martin.
Aye.
District two, Shaw. Oh, I'm sorry, he's not in attendance. District three, Paxton.
Aye.
District four, Graham.
Aye.
District five, Ayers.
Aye.
District six, Richardson.
Aye.
Alrighty, that's unanimous. Thank y'all. Travis, thank you for attending tonight.
Anytime, thank you.
Thanks, Travis.
Alright, next up is our Economic Development Strategic Plan update. Is Chris, are you on?
Yes, sir, I'm here, thank you.
Alright, thank you for joining us.
If you don't mind, I'm gonna go ahead and share the screen with you.
That'd be great.
Alright, can everyone see that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, excellent. Well, again, I appreciate very much the, the team bringing me in and our office to help guide some of this. And again, I really do appreciate the guidance of the council members, Rich, Richardson and Shaw, and also the cooperation and, and great assistance that's been given to me in doing some of these analyses from the staff, from Aaron and Lynn and Marcia to Alex. So thank you to all of them. But Mayor Dunn and council, I do appreciate again this opportunity to present some of this information. Again, this is just an update as we'll be finalizing some things hopefully by the end of February, but wanted to sort of give you an update of where we are. Just some general facts, and again, these things always move. So, but right now, the population is approximately sixteen thousand people. Excuse me, the acreage around fifty-three hundred. Tax rate, as we all know, is twenty-one and a half cents. In doing some of the analysis, we came up to the residential tax base is approximately eighty-three point six percent of your entire value of the town, and the commercial tax base is around sixteen and a half. Residential units, again, this is an approximation, around fifty-seven, fifty-eight hundred residential living units, and the commercial units around three hundred and sixty-five. The average home value, that's a mistype here, it's not price, the average value, at least coming out of the analysis from FY twenty-twenty, is approximately two hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars per home. And again, this is a phenomenal number. And so when you look at, just kind of crack open the book and you start to look at Stallings, it, it really starts to tell a really good story and something that can sell and continue to build on. One of the things, just kind of looking at local economies from sort of a global scale, so this could be applied to New York City to Marshville, you know, is all local economies thrive as long as they have some sense of balance in their system. And so the textbook, like if you were basically teaching an economic development course, the textbook ratio that you would try to achieve is residential value of about sixty percent, and commercial about forty. I'm a big America's Cup sailing fan, and so I think the sailboat depicts that pretty strongly, that the sail represents the residential and is the driving thing that catches the wind, allows the community to move forward, but it's the industrial and the commercial and retail that makes the keel, that keeps the boat from flipping over. So it's that, that balance there that is necessary. Residential is key. Again, nothing about this presentation is to bash residential. So I want to make sure that that is clear. It is, these two things have to have each other. So the residential, that investment is, is key to us to create that workforce that goes to the retails. It creates that healthy retail development, supports our education network. It, it provides that, that culture, that quality of life that is there in the community. But it does come with a cost. Residential demand things, you know, they want parks, they want other stuff, so they have ongoing cost. Residential development is extremely high on a cost-to-serve basis compared to any other land use. And in some areas, it's, it's higher than others. Again, this is balance, is, is critical in that planning going forward to make sure that you have enough areas reserved for something other than residential development to help overall create that good, healthy economy so that we don't overburden the residential community with, with higher tax. And so that's one of the things, is without that balance, you can start to see some of the, you know, some or all of these, depending on the community, where the balance can get out of whack, that the taxes will most likely start to increase because you don't have enough of the, that keel in the water to help support the sale. You have pressures to cut services, so if you don't want to raise taxes, you've got to do something else, and that's the potential of cutting services. People with means have the potential to leave. You know, you could see that probably right now in New York City where there's sort of out of balance and people are vacating the city in droves. In areas where there are no job opportunities, it's hard to have the children of your residents come back home if they don't have a place to potentially work, or at least be close to a place to work. So again, this is just something that could happen and it could happen in varying degrees. Again, without balance, though, at some point, there's gonna have to be some hard decisions made. And we've seen that in communities throughout the US and even in North Carolina, like with places like Cary, where they've had to do some pretty drastic things to help increase their non-residential tax base. So if you look, now let's dial it in, get really specific to Stallings. The, if you look at FY twenty-twenty's, which that ended June thirty of last year. Again, the residential tax base, so, and this is averaged up, is eighty-three point six, but if you look at that residential tax base, it generates approximately eighty-four percent of, or excuse me, its value represents eighty-four percent of all the value within the town. The commercial tax base represents roughly sixteen percent. As we said, the, the dollars that come off of that, so of that eighty, eighty-four percent, seventy-eight percent of the revenue to the town is generated from that eighty-four percent. And twenty-two percent of the revenue to the town is represented within that commercial tax base, which is only sixteen. So you can already see what's happening here, is the expenses start to show up now. And so the expenses, those, those things that are necessary to support a healthy residential community, those expenses are higher than what they generate in tax revenue. So ninety percent of all the expenses in the town, kind of going through the, the books with Marcia and the team, is, it is right at ninety percent that the residential tax base consumes. So it generates seventy-eight percent, but it consumes ninety. The commercial tax base only consumes about ten percent. So again, this is all normal and is the way it should, should be. And, but it also demonstrates why you need to have that commercial tax base. So as a result, in FY twenty-twenty, the residential tax base, because it only consumed, or it only generated seventy-eight and consumed ninety, you lost, you had a net loss of seventy-eight, seven hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars last year on that zoning type, land use type. On the commercial and retail, industrial, you made seven hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. So that's the way the, the commercial is supposed to help support and offset some of the losses of residential. If you break it down per unit, basically every house costs the town a hundred and thirty-five dollars per year. Every industrial, commercial or retail unit generates roughly twenty-one hundred dollars, twenty-two hundred dollars per unit. Again, that's, that's varying much even worse than the houses. That's, that's gonna vary dramatically because you're not talking about everything is equal inside. So it's really hard to do it per unit, but that gives you an idea. So the average home value, tax base value, at two hundred and forty-six, two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. You, again, that is extremely healthy. Very, people would lob off their left arm to have that kind of home value. But if you went with a strategy of no residential, or only residential development and no commercial, your current tax rate would have to be adjusted from twenty-one and a half to thirty-seven point three cents to make up the difference. So that's where I was explaining why you have to then move your tax rate if you don't have enough tax, commercial tax base at the bottom to help shore up that economy, local economy. So with it, with the tax rate at twenty-one and a half cents and the house is losing money, you can look at it and see that every home is roughly subsidized on their tax bill three hundred and ninety dollars. So every citizen benefits from that commercial tax base being there. Again, buy that three hundred and ninety dollars that they would otherwise have to pay. And then when you look at it from a county perspective, it's over five hundred dollars for the county. So you're looking at almost, you know, nine hundred bucks that the residents benefit by having a, a healthy commercial tax base. If for some reason, the town wanted to try to break even at its home value, which is, again, not the point, but it's, it's a good talking point, a good discussion to kind of think about. It would take about, the average home would have to go from two forty-six to three oh nine. That's about a sixty thousand dollar increase, sixty-five, or fifty-five thousand. So when looking at that, it's not just, oh, let's put in three hundred thousand dollar homes. It's the next thousand homes built have to average six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, just to move that needle. In the county, it's dramatically different. So if you look at the countywide, because you have a blend of homes, the value is a little bit lower. And so in the county level, that when we did this analysis, it was the next five thousand had to average one point one million. So to get to a break even. And again, we're not supposed to, I want to keep hitting this point, the residential is not supposed to pay for itself, but it's that balance. So you've got to always go back and getting that, that commercial base. Make sure that you, you know, pound for pound, acre for acre, the most valuable land in your community is industrial, commercial, retail. So, and for what it provides and what, what little it consumes. So with that, the directive was to try to start to develop a, an economic development plan. And so something specific to Stallings. So it's not what Marshville wants, not what Monroe wants, not what Waxall wants. It's what Stallings would fit with Stallings. And one of the unique things with Stallings is the limited land available left to develop. So this is even more critical in making sure that the, going forward, that that land is appropriately zoned and the highest and best uses are put on those. That could be residential, or it could be commercial, or it could be a park. It just, that's your decision to make and what hopefully this plan will help illuminate and get you to where you want to be. The, the, again, the purpose of the plan is to improve the balance in the tax base and improve that financial strength of the town so that you can retain the low taxes while retaining also that great quality of life that already exists there. It's to enable the town to provide even better services. You know, if you need to add additional fire, if you need to add another park, if you need to add sidewalks in certain areas, whatever that may be, this gives you revenue coming in that's not on the backs of the residents to do that. So to generate the higher taxes, higher sales and use taxes to the town. So again, the, from electrical use at the, at Berry Plastics and CEM to even sales tax, the stuff that they would buy. So all of that helps. And then create a better sense of place so that we remain an attractive place to bring your family, not only your family, but also your business. So we looked at this and have some goals put in place. Is the goals of the plan is hopefully to achieve an eighty-twenty. So move that industrial resident, or excuse me, industrial, commercial, retail up from that sixteen percent to twenty percent by twenty-thirty. That's gonna be challenging because we got a couple headwinds against us with COVID kind of slowing some of the industrial, commercial as well as encouraging residential growth. And we're also looking at the revow, which is gonna provide even a higher value for your homes, which is gonna move that, you know, create some delta between the two. We're gonna create awareness and recognition of Stallings as a multifaceted community. So it can, from its commercial, industrial centers to its great neighborhoods and greenways and parks and everything else. Make Stallings more of a destination than a pass-through and then create that traditional downtown. Those would be the, I think, some goals that we've talked about within the committee. Well, you gotta get there somehow. And so we have some strategic items to think about. One is to catalog the existing businesses, which we already have a good handle on already through my office. And then there may, depending on the type of business that you want to catalog, we can grow and develop that list, develop methods in which to demonstrate appreciation to them. Currently, we have a county-wide industry appreciation event, but there may be something more specific and local that Stallings would like to do and encourage their retention. It's that relationship that you work through and with that appreciation event and other outreach programs that you want to, you create that, that ownership that they have in your town. And that helps you, you know, if there's an opportunity to consolidate, that they would choose Stallings over another location, they may have a facility, or if they're gonna have to close, unfortunately, close a facility, that they would choose the other one and not the one located in Stallings. Two is to develop a business attraction strategy that's in alignment with the vision of the town. So you're not gonna necessarily look to recruit an asphalt plant. So what would that be? And so we want to develop those strategies. We have some, we have some ideas that we have for the county. And some of those would be more in line, I think, with the town's vision and working with the Economic Development Committee that we can really hone in on that. Develop a, a product development plan. So start to identify some land for commercial development. And that allows us to work with our landowners, work with developers, find ways to create, again, when we talk about product from an economic development standpoint, that's ready sites, that's buildings, other things available that companies can move to or retail or office development, where people can come into the town and start working right away. Develop strategic partnerships, again, with the retail development. Folks, understand how the dynamics are right now with retail. Obviously, they're changing daily with COVID and, and other pressures that are on the retail community. And then partner with the private sector to improve that existing retail center. You know, most retail right now that is successful is experiential, if I said that right. So you want to go and have an experience while you're doing that and spending the money. Otherwise, if it's not, then I can just click on Amazon and be done with it. And communicate the town's vision for the town's, town center strategic area plan. So we'll put a little bit more meat on these action, strategic items with their action steps as we put together the economic development plan and we'll bring that back for your review. So again, some takeaways, Stallings is in a great place. It's in a, you know, great place geography-wise, great place. I think your tax base is healthy because your home values are so, are so high. You know, if your home value was a hundred and sixty thousand, we'd be having a much different discussion. So I think you're in a, better off than most places that we would be talking to. You're also, you know, you do need to focus on the remaining land. That's, that's probably the biggest Achilles' heel now is how much land you have left to make a long-term difference in, in establishing that, that good balance. And so as we've said, you know, one of the things I appreciate so much about what you guys do in, in seeking the office and, and being elected is you're making decisions now for things that'll happen well when you're out of office. And so there's some decisions here that have to be made and it will benefit people thirty, fifty years down the line. So with that, that's a kind of a quick overview. Ready to handle any questions you may have.
Alright, thank you, Chris. Yeah, any questions, comments?
I've got a few comments, Mayor.
I've got a few comments, Mayor. But but there are questions I can hold off for a second on that, any press.
Go ahead, Brad.
Well, yeah, let me first thanks, thank Chris and and it was fun in this process. It is fun, this process, we're not quite done yet to reconnect with him. Many of you knew I did some work similar to Chris's job for the city of Charlotte for a while. To a couple of points I make, frame of reference. What does long term mean? It's easy to think about long term being the twenty thirty framework that this plan is going to encapsulate. And that's now I would just submit, that's not what we mean by long term. When you see some of those things like out of balance, communities going bankrupt. The pendulum swinging past the point of no return. I I think that we ought to at least recognize when we say that we we think as the committee. Stallings twenty sixty or twenty fifty or twenty ninety. I know that's hard to get your head around, but but the the point of a good economic development plan is to really be thinking about really long term problems. That come from not giving enough attention to the things we've outlined, such as business retention, problem solving. Identifying land and in our case, you're spending some effort, time, money and energy on a downtown. So I'd I'd start with that point, long term is long term. I asked some of you when the downtown project was going, we asked some of the committee members, who are we building this downtown for? I think the right answer is our children's children. There is no way in my lifetime Stallings downtown will be what as vibrant as it could be. Or will be when my kids are around with their kids. We can take some steps in the right direction, but but that node of really humming, commercial, walkable development with ice cream, coffee. Whatever, it's going to take a long, long time to do. So that that's the first comment. The second thing is this stuff isn't hard. You know, my first job at the city in two thousand, well, I started there in ninety nine. But my first economic development job in the city, you know what it was? It was driving around Charlotte, particularly Westinghouse Boulevard in my car and getting paid mileage. To knock on doors, set appointments, to go sit down and get as high up as I could in the company. Plant manager, CFO, CEO, sometimes it was the assistant to. And the whole question was, thanks for being here, what do you need to to grow and expand? That essentially in a nutshell is what this plan really puts a premium on is is build building business relationships with C E M. I'd say it's pretty good. Berry Plastics, probably okay. But in addition to those two and McGee, of course. The fifty other businesses in our community, who are they? What do they need? Union West Business Park, what's the potential? It's going to take seven hundred thousand dollars, Chris Easterly tells us to to bring those roads up to standard and own them ourselves and make that a really humming business park. What's the argument for us even considering partnering in that? I mean, Chris's analysis tonight helps us get closer to that logical reason for why would the town put public money into a private business park? I don't think we're doing that, by the way, that's not a recommendation, but it's it begins to lay the groundwork. And the final thing I'll say is the good news is I don't think we have to do a lot of work on that point number four of identity or three of identifying land, setting it aside. Our small area plans that you guys did long before I joined the board. That does a pretty good job of showing where that intensification of industrial, commercial. Office should be, Idaho out of four eighty five, Office Park, Smith Farm Road, Gribble Road. And the Monroe bypass area and downtown, there's not much else you've got in the town. So focusing our efforts and planning in those quadrants are important. So that's enough for me for a moment and and I I can take some questions too from from my perspective.
Thank you, Brad. Anybody else comments or questions?
I'll always ask questions, man, if y'all give me an opportunity, y'all know that. So Brad, you kind of hit on a key topic, right? Is that, I mean, if if we're looking at long plan, long term plan, you know, thirty, fifty years out into the future. How does that? From a process point of view, transition into. What do we do for the, you know, next twelve months, next twenty four months? And and actually action as a fifty year plan, if you will.
Yeah, so my opinion that there's. Two or three things. Have a staff resource available to be the business problem solver. That sounds simple, but but it's someone on on our team, staff team. It's and it's likely part time, there's likely a portion of someone's job to be that person who proactively. Ideally, proactively, but at least reactively is point person for that business owner who has an issue with traffic, transportation. A traffic signal not working, road potholes, you name it, just what what are the things? So a a resource in our staff that is on point for business relations. The second thing is that the downtown. Now, I it was the top council priority last February, it probably will continue. I assume we've got some time and resources devoted to it. With that little four block area right beside Town Hall around the park and up to Monroe Road. There's potential for huge economic impact there with a future downtown. It's it it will happen down by the hospital organically, it won't happen by downtown unless we spend some time and efforts there. So those are the 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 two things that we can do in the next twelve to twenty four months and and others might have ideas as well.
I I just wanted to know, based on your experience. You know, it's for me, it's a little hard to put fifty years into what do we do today kind of mentality? So I was just kind of curious.
Yeah, and I just wanted to frame that because some of some of the 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 balance in the presentation that we all. You saw tonight that Chris did a great job presenting. And some of that, it was, you know, kids not coming back to to live in Stallings. Now, obviously, that's that's a generalization because Stallings is a bedroom community of Charlotte. I mean, literally, people always come to Stallings to live, to work in Charlotte. But but some of those bad outcomes, perhaps increasing taxes and not having services or sewer infrastructure, road infrastructure failing. Those are the fifty year problems if we don't have a tax basis supported, even though we don't pay for sewer, as we'll talk about in the next agenda.
If I may, also, you know, it's it's foundational pieces. So you're putting in this foundation blocks, just think of it like that, and it will start to build momentum. So you, you know, it won't take long to start seeing some things happen.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Chris, I think this is probably directed to you because I know you've done this locally here for a long time as well. Are there particular businesses or types of business that you see as being really suitable? For Stallings with regard to our location and the amenities that we have to offer as a town? That's my first question. And the second question is, we've been getting a lot of requests for apartment complexes. And I consider that residential development. I'm curious how you, from an economic development standpoint, view apartments. Whether it's more commercial or residential.
It's definitely residential because of the cost to serve, but it's different in the sense, and I'm going to the apartment component. Because you do densify your investment and the cost to serve is there, whatever is happening there versus like an R forty. You know, when a house per acre zoning. To serve that with a police force or with a fire department or whatever has to, that extends them pretty far. If it's densified, it's a little bit, it helps. So not that you want to densify everything, but you want to find pockets where you can do that. And there may be some opportunities to better use that finite land. You know, may not, it may not build better or build as well for a commercial, but it might be a good apartment complex. So it's not, you know, there's never an easy general answer, right? So it's everything's kind of site specific. And so you'd want to look at them each each individual site and each individual project. So they, but the you're creating a lot of value per acre in an apartment. Complex versus one home per per acre. The type of businesses really is the, it going to be more in the professional side. Things that are more intellectual property focused. Things that would go out on a bread truck or Amazon truck versus something out on a fifty three foot trailer. But I would see, you know, with COVID, you're, we'll see how this is evolving with office development. But there's a lot of office space in uptown Charlotte now that's coming available because people just don't want to go work in a tall building. And how is that going to push out to sort of these mid and low high, low rise office buildings? So are we looking at two to five story? Just potentially something like that, particularly around the hospital, might be a good target for that, where you can get professional services. So again, there's, we can go through that and we'll we'll give you a bigger list. But I think, you know, anything is software development, professional services, high end, you sort of medical device, anything that's going to be smaller, but high value. Would probably be some good, just off the top of my head, examples.
All right, thanks, Linda, thanks, Chris, anybody else?
Just add into what he just said for Linda's, I mean, do you have like a? I hate to say a portfolio, if will, Chris, that you're able to. Go and and try to attract those type of businesses or. Is there a way, ways of luring those type of businesses?
There, it depends, you know, again, a lot of this is changing too. And in a traditional manufacturing sense, it's a little bit easier because you're you're going to bigger trade shows. You're going and finding these companies in certain areas that they've clustered like California or New York or Chicago where they're trying to leave. When you're looking at. Something like this is going to, a lot of it will come through the brokerage community as well as through Department of Commerce. And so it's, there's some specific strategies that we can do and there's some specific things that we can do to make people aware. It's a lot of it is just awareness of what we want and what the town is willing to move. You know, sort of heaven and earth for. And if they're willing to do that, it's going to attract. And so there's a lot of that stuff that we'll put out and become more aware, just awareness of what we've got, what we can, what we want to be. And then actively go out and try to then recruit that. So there's not anything that's sort of like, oh, let me just pull out of this bucket of projects that I've got. It's not, it doesn't typically work like that. So it's, we're constantly in a mode of of looking and and trying to make people aware of the different things that and where we have a competitive advantage. And so that's where Stallings brings a whole nother, you know, it it brings something that we don't have in other parts of the county. So that's, you know, one of the advantages when we're selling Stallings, we're really not selling against anyone locally. It's really against maybe a Belmont or, you know, someone else, a Fort Mill type of thing.
Chris, question for you. So when I look at Stallings and and see a lot of potential, but one of the things I see that is holding us back a little bit. It's is somewhat non traditional and and we really don't have access to a good fiber network here. And from what I've seen in other communities that have developed or kind of encouraged that type of connectivity. Is that you've seen an explosion of of small shops open up. I know downtown Kansas City did that with Google Fiber and Dallas is going through that right now. But with the town of Stallings, it seems like we're limited to subpar. Yeah, I won't mention their names, but internet service that is continually a source of frustration for our residents. Do you think there'd be some value in in reaching out to to some of these companies that that offer that? And seeing what they would look for to invest in a community like Stallings?
Yeah, I mean, you're closer than pretty much everybody else to like Google Fiber in Charlotte. And so it's, you would be more inclined to get it than others. In in the first wave that it spills out. But yes, I mean, Rowan County has done some of that, Fayetteville just finished. Something with that broadband is a big topic for us right now, particularly because of the, you know, the remote learning, the remote work. It's, it is high on everybody's list, it's one of the top legislative priorities for the state association. For economic development and we're tying up, tying in with other folks to help with that too. So it is a, that topic is. Almost every association or every group, you know, focused on development. That's when they're top three right now. So it, we should see some big changes with that, you know, who knows what Elon Musk is doing with the satellites and. Yeah, that can change pretty quick, everything. So I know the first ones, I guess he just shot one off yesterday, just putting some satellites up around the North Pole. So he's starting that network, so we'll see how that starts to go. So putting in like hard fiber lines is one strategy, but I think we need to be open to what's happening. There's so much moving in that space right now.
Sure.
But yes, it is, it is a very, very high priority for all of us, for sure. Because again, without that, you're not. You know, we want to target international companies too, that's what we, you know, one of the things I'm very proud of. And so if they're moving engineering files back and forth between Denmark and Stallings, that's going to happen. You know, you can't wait for dial up, so. I hope that answers, yeah.
Thank you.
Well, my comment, the two words I liked, three couple of words I heard, the highest and best value. You know, I always like that, whether it's in economic development or any other application. So, you know, I think as we go about looking at projects in town. And we always keep that in mind that, you know, as part of Chris's economic development strategy is make sure it's the highest and best value use of that piece of property.
The one thing I would say, because you are in such a good place and because you have such a good sort of underpinning, is don't settle.
Well, it's, that's good advice, a good timing on that advice there, Chris, it's always good.
Well, and that that does bring up some questions on on, Chris, do you have some kind of a checkpoint on what might be considered settling?
It's just when you start to, in every decision, sort of think about, not just the one, if it's a residential project, don't think about it just as that. Think about how it ties into the whole quilt that you're putting together. And so that's really it, I mean, because again, you're going to need something that's more affordable. You can't have, it can't be Hilton Head Island either, you know, and so. You you've got to have that balance even within the residential base, but you know, really thinking about it. But I, you know, just throwing up a strip mall for a strip mall case, that may, you know, think about how that plays into the whole. What you're trying to, what your vision is again to that twenty fifty.
Alrighty, any other questions for Chris? And this presentation, is this something, what do you, is this just for our information? Is this something you're going to use and when we go out and talk to businesses or what do you, what do you think?
I think Brad, yeah, we've talked about within the committee, we'll have a, we'll have a piece, a very small, easily digestible piece to present. Okay, this is really for your information to understand how we're, what's behind, there's a lot more behind what will be a small piece. I think Brad is that.
Yeah, I think that's fine. I think this, the goal for for the numbers and sort of the eighty four, sixteen and all of that and the cost of housing, that's not probably for public consumption. That is probably too detailed, but it does, we'd like to be armed with that information as we put together a front and back type strategy that that's four or five points that's workable. And I think that comes to you probably in late February.
Well, as we're talking about economic development and which we know Highway seventy four to bypass around the hospital will grow, like you said, Chris, will grow organically. And I think Lynn's on the call here, have we got any? Inquiries from businesses lately? What's an update on that from to your office, Chris, and to you, Lynn?
While they're unmuting themselves, I I saw recently that there was a retail establishment being proposed up on my end of town near the Chestnut Soulless Apartments. That's a nice thing to see. That's not necessarily what you're asking, but it's related.
I think the corner right there on seventy four just got a big old for sale sign placed on it. So it's the opposite corner from the hospital.
So do we have any inquiries? That's what I was just curious if, where do we stand from that, you know? Any hotels, restaurants?
I mean, from our office, everything is extremely slow. We've been focusing more on the existing industry side. I think people will, our activity will start to pick up after people have settled in with the new administration at the federal level. And then there's a new commerce secretary at our state level. So there's some changes both, you know, federally and statewide that I think people are just, you know, they don't want to make a decision quite until they know all the information. So that should probably start to manifest in, in February.
All right, Chris. Well, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you so much for letting me be a part of this and look forward to working very closely with all of you.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Next, I will move on to the Union County draft of the interlocal agreement. And I'll turn the meeting over to Alex.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to Chris and Brad and everyone for their hard work on the ED work team. Excited about that project. Can y'all see my screen with the rippling water there?
Got it.
Right? All right. So, uh, real quickly, so you all know, Union County, they are the primary water and sewer utility provider for Stalings. And in October, town officials, both staff and elected officials at various points, met with county officials, discuss, uh, ongoing water sewer issues and just kind of build relationships. And at that time, the county officials indicated that they wanted to enter into some sort of interlocal agreement on water sewer with the various municipalities within the county. We didn't know what the substance of what that was until late December, when they provided a draft of that agreement. Of course, we shared that with the board. Staff have evaluated it, posed a bunch of questions to the county and worked with our neighbors in that evaluation. I want to especially express my gratitude to the county staff as well as the town of Indian Trail staff, as well as our staff. I think we've got some excellent working relationships there. That be said, the agreement, without trying to summarize or pretend to try to summarize everything, here are some of the key takeaways that are in there, the key highlights. The first is the county, under this proposed agreement, would be our exclusive water sewer utility provider. So that would mean if the city of Charlotte, if sewer capacity wasn't available in a certain area of town and we want Charlotte to come in and provide that capacity where Union County wouldn't, wouldn't be able to do that. It restates some existing county policies, indicates a desire to work together as far as information sharing, that kind of thing towards the county's capital improvement and park and water sewer master plan. This is probably one of the biggest ones. We would agree to be responsible for any package plant. If the developer or subsequent owners or owner ceases to provide sound maintenance. What a package plant is, is it's essentially a smaller wastewater treatment plant that serves a smaller area. So you'll see that in a lot of times where perhaps there's not sewer capacity for a particular area. The developers will go and try to set up a, a, a package plant to treat the wastewater for a particular site. And those still have to get permitted through the state. And the term is for 30 years, but really any party can get out of it within two years' notice. So, um, staff, after hearing feedback from the board members that we've talked to about this and have reached out, talking with our neighbors, talking with the county, you know, we could talk about this and really get into the legal nitty-gritty. But I tried to be concise and focus on some key takeaways for some suggestions about what the town's draft position could be. First of all, the agreement is not equitable on all sides. Town will be making a number of significant commitments. And I do not see much incentive for the town to enter into such an agreement. The second is committing to take care of any sort of sewer plant in town. It'd be a, just a huge and significant cost assumption and really risk assumption for the town. And not only would it be a cost standpoint, you know, we don't have the infrastructure from a staff capacity to be able to manage those kind of operational wastewater treatment facilities. And finally, of course, we would be willing to kind of work with the county, protect our needs as far as the county's capital improvement plan. That goes without saying, we want to be a good partner and information share for them. And we want to keep the dialogue open, even when we don't agree on everything and work cooperatively with Union County, the town of Indian Trail and other municipalities. When I say work cooperatively, it doesn't mean we sing kumbaya on the fire. It means we listen, we keep the communication channels open and we try to work together for everybody's benefit. So those are some really brief suggestions, trying to break this down into a simple form. And if the council concurs, you know, we could draft a communication incorporating the above and, and send it on to Union County. So with that being said, I tried to go over a lot of information very briefly there. We welcome any questions or concerns or happy to sit back and, and, and watch the discussion. So thank y'all.
All right, Alex. Thank you for the work on this and getting feedback from the council and incorporating it into your presentation there. So, you know, I agree with your, your analysis there. And I'm fine with y'all read, drafting a response and bringing it back to us, using those bullet points that you showed. So anybody else?
Yeah, I, I agree with that as well. I think one thing I thought about, that slipped my mind earlier when we had our subcommittee meeting, Brad and Heather, we need to add a caveat and going forward, we need to add a condition to all of our developments that they tie into Union County Water Sewer. So we can avoid facing any of these issues.
Yep, agree.
I shall mention Mac and I've had that conversation as well. And that's something I, I think we can do. And I'll let him expand on that more in depth.
All right. Anybody else?
I certainly agree, Mayor. And I don't, I'll make the motion to direct staff to develop a communication to the county incorporating the bullet points that he has outlined for us tonight.
All right. Motion by Ms. Paxton. Can I get a second?
Second.
Who was that?
John.
Yeah, okay. Saying by Mr. Martin, uh, any other further discussion? Aaron, could you do a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. District one, Martin.
Hi.
District three, Paxton.
Hi.
District four, Graham.
Hi.
District five, Ayers.
Hi.
District six, Richardson.
Hi.
All right. That's unanimous. All right. Thank y'all. All right. And next up is our closed session. Can I get a motion from somebody to enter into? It's, uh, is it 143, 318, 11A and 3 and 5? Is it 143, Aaron?
Yes, sir. 143, 318, 11A3 and 11A5.
All right.
If the council would like for Ms. Hare to join us for the one question, please just make that a part of the motion, motion so that she can also join us in that closed session.
All right. Alex, you want to say something?
Aaron beat me to it. Thank you, Aaron.
All right. Can I get somebody to make that motion?
Just motion to have her join us?
And to go in this closed session pursuant to 143, 318, 11A3 and 11A5.
I move.
So move. There you go. That's easy enough with Aaron. Then coming, uh, being invited in. So motion by Ms. Paxton, second by Mr. Richardson. Richardson, yeah, I got you. All in favor, say aye. I'll oppose. Yeah. All right. So everybody.
So what we'll do is we'll log off of this meeting and then I will open the other closed session link that you received in your email today.
Okay.
Thanks, all.